Okay, so we started the recording, get rid of that. I will call this regular meeting of the Public Site and Building Commission to order at 7:04 PM. Please join me in the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. So. Public input? Nope. Correspondence? Nothing. Other than what we have for our different projects. First thing, we have a few things we'll do before we get into old business. Approval of the 2025 Public Site and Building Commission meeting schedules. Kathy sent that around with the attachments, with the agenda, and the minutes from the last meeting. So everything's laid out. We kept it at two meetings per month. Except no meetings on November 26th and December 24th due to holidays. And we'll keep it at that, thought being that if needed, we will have the two meetings each month. If not, we can always cancel. It's easier to cancel than it is to have to deal with the whole special meeting agenda, put it up at the right time, et cetera, et cetera. So I will make a motion that we approve the 2025 meeting schedule as posted and as reported by Kathy.
Second.
John, seconds. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
I.
I oppose. We're good. Basically, it's the same second and fourth Wednesdays in this room and by Google meets at seven o'clock. So there's that. Before we go into approval of meeting minutes, there's a couple of other updates that I need to inform everybody of, just as it becomes part of the meeting records. So at our last meeting, Roy gave me his letter of resignation. And then sent it in to Lisa, and Lisa forwarded me a copy, so it's pretty official. At the end of December, Roy will resignation will be official and find somebody to take his place. Then, since then, I've also received a letter of resignation from John Mentee. John sent his to Dan and to Lisa, and I got a copy of that also. We also have a couple of people who are up for reappointment. I believe you are, David. And Dave Horvath, David Horvath are both up for reappointment. However, Lisa's been working with with Dan and the Board of Selectmen about, I got a chart that shows how many people are up for reappointment. And the number didn't seem right to me, because usually with a seven-member board, you have four at one time, and then a couple of years later you have three, and so it keeps switching four and three. So Lisa went back and checked and found a mistake, if that's what you want to call it, in the way person's term was recorded, and so they need to be I think appointed for another year or something. The Board of Selectmen is going to handle it hopefully Tuesday night, next Tuesday night at their meeting, so that we don't have that five and two thing happening. We get four and three. Now, Dave Olson is up for reappointment, and he's chosen not to be reappointed. John Herna, I believe, is up for reappointment. I don't know his status, so I'll have to contact him to find out. And I'm up for reappointment. I am not going to be reappointed. After 20 years, I'm stepping back. However, saying that, you heard all the different people who need to get appointed or reappointed. And we're not having another meeting this year, most likely. Our scheduled meeting would be December 25th. Everybody ready to meet on the 25th? I don't think so. So unless we need to put together a special meeting to do something before the January meeting, which is January 8, this could be it. But if the Board of Selectmen hasn't gotten into doing appointments or reappointments, I would ask anybody who's available to please join us, and I can let you know by email, because I will continue as long as I need to, to keep projects moving forward. The biggest thing is keeping the HVAC project moving forward, approving invoices. I'll go through a few things when we get to that project, but we'll have a few things that we're going to have to deal with. And if the Board of Selectmen hasn't gotten into appointing people to fill either vacancies or vacancies from resignation or vacancies from people not wanting to be reappointed, I'd ask that anybody, if you can, please join us. Please do, even if it's on Zoom. And I'll keep you posted about that. And I would like to finish this section by saying thank you to John Mentee, to Roy, to David Olson for all the work that you've put in over the years. As John Herna always says, we live and die as a team. We've done a lot of things together. We've gotten a lot of projects done. I don't know, eight or 10. And we've done, oh, here comes David Olson. We've gotten a lot done. So thank you, Roy. Thank you, John, and hi, Dave Olson. I don't know if you can hear us or not. Well, we'll see when he gets in. Thank you, David Olson, for all the work that you've done for the town. So then we're going to move into approval of meeting minutes. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve meeting minutes of the regular meeting of November 13, 2024.
Second.
John Mentee, seconds. Does anybody have any comments on those minutes or updates, upgrades, corrections, et cetera? We're good? All in favor? I oppose. Good. And now we'll move into our old business. So the training range. Today, Alan from CBS was supposed to go out to the range and do the seasonal, the final commissioning of, and this is a winter season, seasonal commissioning of the makeup air unit and any associated items that are part of their contract. And David Olson was going to meet, or David Horvath was going to meet him there, but couldn't. So he was going to check in while Alan was doing the commissioning to see if the makeup air unit was running in unoccupied mode like we had been talking about wanting to have over the past how many months. And he wasn't able to, however, in the emails back and forth last week, even the week before, with Lieutenant Libertini and ESC, the people that do the controls, we were told that the makeup air unit has been kicking on when the temperature gets below 50. And it's kicked on a bunch. So that means it's working. The way we asked for it didn't work, which is great. We're going to check into that probably with ESC, because they should be able to see that, and Alan from CES should be able to see that, too. Is 50 too high? Should we make it a little lower? I don't know if that would make it kick on more or less. I have no idea. But we can check into that. And that's hopefully one less thing we have to deal with in moving forward. Other thing that we have, oh, so I actually did a budget update, which isn't much different than the last one. I can put it on the screen if you want to. Because we did have an invoice last time from CES. It was for $200. Because they were, at that point, working on getting remote access. And when the remote access was set up, what ended up happening was it gave them remote access to certain things, not other things, which is weird. And it was easier for Alan to just go out there and do it in person. And Libertini got him in hopefully today into the range. And he did the work that he had to do. So we still owe them 2,800 on their contract. We still owe money to ESC. I've got to check in with them and find out if they're waiting for something. But it shows that we still have about 4,500 in contingency with all of that. So. And like I said, I can put it up on the screen if people want to see it. I didn't send it around, because I just corrected it. It's, like I said, $200 different from the last one. But once we get a little closer to closing that out, we will, I will update that and send it. I am going to the Board of Selectmen meeting next week to give them a kind of year-end update. I have to do quarterly updates. I'll have something for them and bring budget, a couple of different, we have another budget thing we'll look at with another project. So with the, we don't have any invoices for the range. As I said, that CES invoice last meeting, we did that. We will get, once we get the report from Alan.
Can people hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, David. Can't see you, but we can hear you. Can you hear us? Okay. Don't know. We'll find out. So once we get the report from CES, which I'm assuming would be either later, I don't think it'll be later this week. I think it'll be next week. I'll send that around to everyone so you can see it. And take a look at it as a group at our January meeting. And as I said, no invoices. So unless anybody has any information, questions, et cetera, about the range, we'll move on. Okay. So Rockwell and Johnson Schools. Dr. Carver's not here tonight, as she had a prior commitment. However, I'm going to, in her absence, say, because we didn't do this, I don't think we knew it at the last meeting, congratulations to her for being named Superintendent of the Year by the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents. And so kudos to her with that. She's been our superintendent for 10, going on more than 10 years. And we think she should be Superintendent of the Year every year, but this year she was honored by her peers with that award. I did talk to Dr. Carver earlier. And I had been emailing with a couple of different people. So on the Rockwell and Johnson School projects, the audit was completed, the review, all that, and the town actually received the last reimbursement check. Yay. So in that way, that's kind of done. But we have a few other things we have to deal with. I will, if I can remember how to screen share. I received from Geraldine, actually, a kind of a final budget report, which I sent around to everyone. And I will do that here. Again, I'll need to be reminded on how to. Oh, this is Google meets. It's not Zoom. So I got used to doing the Google meets, and so can help me if you want. I don't care. Reaction, present. There we go. Got present. Okay, and then I have to, no, it says, yeah, it says present, because that's what. I'm not presenting that. I am presenting this. I am presenting. I see it on my screen, but how do I get it up there? Oh, there we go. I'm getting it.
There it is.
There it is. I don't know if I need to make it bigger. Like I said, I sent it around to everyone. And can I, I can do that if I need to. Oops, I want to do that. There's a thing that says make it bigger, but it's not actually working. Anyways, it's also not, so here we go. We can scroll. No, can't scroll. How do I make it scroll? How do I get rid of all the people? Well, anyways, bottom line is we received 45% in reimbursement, which was a little higher than, we were looking at 43, 44. But because the state allowed us to submit a second group of, I guess you could call them change orders, and it was mostly for abatement and other things. And we did get to switch the budget, putting the excess money from Johnson into Rockwell. It actually made it so that we could get a higher percentage of reimbursement. And so it shows the reimbursement amounts for each school, total cost to the town under the referendum approved amount. And what I saw was that, in using all the numbers that are on here, Geraldine put this together, that we have 350,000 in contingency. Which I kind of thought we had more, but again, each time we had a budget report, when it was presented, during that meeting, we would approve a bunch of invoices, and then that would get added in. So each time there was this much in contingency, it ended up getting changed by the next budget report. And we haven't had a budget report in probably a year as they've been working on the audit. So I don't know if anybody has any questions on this or any comments. Jen, if you have anything you want to throw in about.
That 300, that 350, it still looks not a bad number for a project of that magnitude.
No.
Cost and size. I'm glad we came under overall, if that money goes back into the town's
Yeah.
general fund.
Yep.
So.
And we have to remember, too, that we did have, it wasn't a large amount, but we did do the repairs to the the gas pipes that were leaky. That wasn't a large amount, but that came out of the project also. So we actually have an invoice to do tonight from STV. I'll talk about that when we get there, but we'll have another invoice from, a final invoice from STV with some of the work like this that Geraldine put together and some of the work that she put into getting through the audit.
Does this, that payment, does that close out all the state reimbursement, or there's still possibly more?
No. This is, Jen, I believe this is the final reimbursement, that we're done. We got everything, right?
That is correct. We're done.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's a good thing. And that it actually, from the time that they said that they were complete with the report, they had a couple of questions, the questions were answered, we received the checks pretty quickly after that. So that's, we didn't have to wait too long for that.
I think that went on pretty fast, actually. For the state, you know, we move at the speed of government, and that was pretty fast.
Yeah.
So.
Well, the audit itself seemed to drag on and on, and they had questions. The questions got answered. But that period of time, once they were said where they were done, and we got the check, that was pretty quick. So that was good.
Great.
Going back to the the pipes that had to get repaired or resealed, the process, whatever the process was that had to be done. Dr. Carver said that she was going to contact Rizzo. She sent a letter. Hadn't heard anything, but then recently she got a letter back from Jim Delaney saying sorry for the delay, that they've been in contact with several different people, including the contractor who took care of the pipes, and they've not been responding. So Rizzo's trying to get a response out of that contractor to see, and he included, Dr. Carver forwarded me the email, included something from, I think Perkins Eastman, which was either RFI or SML or something that showed that yes, the correct stuff was used, pipes, et cetera. And that the building inspector, there was another thing, a building inspector did a roof inspection, showed everything up there was fine. So there weren't any, from their point of view, issues. But still, looking at trying to contact the contractor and get something in writing from them. Rizzo was trying to get something in writing from the contractor. And then we'll have to see what they say and go from there. As I said, we do have a invoice. So if there's other things that we need to talk about with the Rockwell and Johnson project, please ask questions or bring it up now. Otherwise, we'll do this invoice and move along. Anything, anybody? Good? All right, so I'm going to go there. And then I'm going to just bear with me while I get the next thing. So this is an invoice from STV. We had received this invoice months ago. However, while the amount was correct, other amounts on the invoice were incorrect in that, this was for the level spreader, so we're going back that far. We're going back to last late winter, early spring. This past year. And it was like, I think, somewhere around April, May, that I received an invoice which was incorrect because the contract amount was incorrect. And so STV had exceeded their contract with that. So we did a change order, which we approved sometime in the summer, and then they never sent another, I think they thought they did, but they didn't. So this one's dated October 11, 2024. It's, I'm going to make a motion that we approve STV invoice number 90032272 with that October date for Johnson Elementary School, and again, for the level spreader. And this is the final amount for that, and it's $1,820. And that's basically Evan getting the last few things finished with that, when we found out certain areas of the pipe had to be buried differently, and Sunburst had to take care of all that. So I need a second.
What's second?
John Mentee, seconds. Does anybody have any questions on this? All in favor? I oppose. Done.
So that closes that up.
I hope so. Well, we'll have one, like I said, a final invoice.
For a level spreader.
Level spreader, yes. And there's a little bit left in the Rockwell STV contract, which will be used to take care of the amount that Geraldine had had to do recently. I mean, she was pretty much done until the state came up with more questions, and then she had to do a little bit more updating with the spreadsheets. So that's, we're getting close to being done with Rockwell and Johnson Schools. The audits are always the longest part of any project with the state. So we're glad that that's getting to a close. Does anybody have any other questions or any other input on those two projects, Rockwell and Johnson? Good, move on. So high school HVAC. So let's get an update, I think, from Michael. Michael, are you going to give us an update, please?
You can't retire until this project's over with.
Yeah, I did remind Dr. Carver that said that, she and Teri Yatsky said that to me eight years ago.
God bless your service and your heart.
Terry's gone. She retired.
I'm not going to disappear. I'm bound to get things, continue to get things moving forward.
It's like anything else, you know, I think, obviously, you know, we have a relationship with you, right? So, you know, we know everybody, you know, everybody has sort of the same expectations, but it's a good working relationship, right? And you're going to miss those sort of scenarios, so.
Well, thank you.
You'll be missed. Yeah, I mean, so obviously, the contract, I think, is just waiting to be signed by both parties. I saw some emails. Geraldine finalized it, sent it out. So I think either Save More or probably Save More first. We'll get the originals, sign them and then send them in, get them signed by the first selectman, and then the first selectman, you know, will pass a copy on to Save More. Definitely took a little bit longer than than I've anticipated, or, you know, whatever the case may be. The biggest concern that I have is schedule. You know, we were really looking to kind of start our abatement planning meetings in October. Perhaps even scheduling some abatement work, depending on approved plan, you know, maybe in November. So I, you know, again, I just, I try to mitigate the risk and look at the risks and look ahead, and I definitely got some schedule challenges. I definitely need to, I just got a preliminary updated schedule from Save More. So literally just got that, I think, yesterday or today. I looked at it. Definitely have some questions and concerns. So really want the opportunity to meet with them first, to talk to them about that, because the dates aren't, it's just not going to work. And I don't know why he pushed them, or I just got to talk to him. I think he kind of made this quick. But, you know, I don't want you demobilizing on October 8, 2025. You know what I mean? I need you out of there way before that. I don't need you, you know, so just those things. I think, you know, the contract kind of you know, delayed some things, and we just got to make up some time. So I need to get with the contractor, get this thing going. Hopefully, we can get these signed contracts you know, within the next couple of days or something. So I'm hoping to try to meet with Save More before Christmas, you know, before I lose them for the break. Just have a plan in place, a realistic plan of like, all right, January 1, you know, and obviously include Jen and the Board of Ed and coordinate a plan of attack in moving forward and just accountability from there. So again, it's definitely my job to always share with you guys, be completely transparent. You know, the contract, right, wrong, or indifferent, whatever the case may be, it just, it took a lot longer than than, you know, than I anticipated, or I think a lot of people anticipated. So you know, so where do we go from here? We come up with a plan and we make it happen, right? So that's my next step.
So Michael, while this contract wrangling, wrangling has been going on.
That's a good way to put it.
Has not been doing any work?
No, so I think they've done some CHRO stuff. I think they've tried to go as far as they can.
Right.
As far as they're comfortable. I've done a little bit of begging to try to get them to do, you know, some other stuff. And again, I just think they went as far as they could, and I, you know, just wanted to be sure that, you know, contractually, things are appropriate. So you know, I don't think they were sitting on their hands. I think they went as far as they could. You know, as much as they can go forward without having to sign a contract. I know any contractor, and you guys know, I mean, you know, something happens, the contractor falls through, and you know, you're giving out POs. I mean, you know, that can ruin a business, you know, it can hurt a business. So I told Jay and the team over at Save More, you know, do what you can. We, you know, Bethel appreciates it, the project appreciates it. So again, I think those guys have tried to go above and beyond for the town to try to get a head start on things. So yeah, and I saw the commissioning bids came in. I glanced at them. I just got a few things going on this week. Plus, my wife has COVID, so it's been interesting. But yeah, I'll dissect those and take a look at them and do a quick analysis. Hopefully, I'll upload that stuff to Google Docs, obviously send emails to everybody with my analysis, and we'll take it from there for the commissioning.
Yeah, I can show, let's see. I don't know if this will show up correctly. Hang on. There we go. I can't move it. How do you make it? Anyways, the bottom part of it.
You slide it up and down with the sidebar?
Yeah, I'm trying to, and it's not. So there were four proposals received. I'll get rid of that. Since we can't see the amounts, but four proposals received. And as Michael said, they were a bit open. Since we can't see the amounts, but four proposals received. And as Michael said, he's, they were, bid opening was the fifth. And it was a day or two later when Jen sent around the the proposals. And so Michael will be doing a, and his team will take a look at all those. And my, they, they all, they're all close except for one, which is a little higher. But I'm thinking, and I, you can correct me if I've wrong, either Michael or Jen, they seem to be lower than the budget number that we put in by a little bit.
That's correct. Yes.
Which is good because that could give us the possibility of doing some alternates. Or I don't know if it's enough, but we'll figure that out once we get that, whichever company, obviously you got to take, take a look at all the proposals, make sure they've given us all the information we've asked for and we're not missing anything. You know, even just can't grab the lowest one and say, let's go with them. So maybe by, hopefully by the next meeting in January, we'll be looking at putting a commissioning agent in place. Think we'll have that, Michael, in January?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Yeah. Once you get, once you get that together, you could send it around to everybody so they could start looking at it, even though some of us might not be.
Yeah, I mean, as soon as I'm done, you know, like I said, probably within the next week. I, I'm not going to wait for the next meeting. I'll just send it around. The only, the only thing I'll do prior to the next meeting is just, you know, four to eight hours prior to our next building committee meeting, you know, send it to the IT guys and make sure it's on the agenda and all that stuff.
Yep. Okay. So then Jen, I have a question for you, if you know the answers. And Michael started out with the contract with Save More, which I know, as I said, there's been some wrangling back and forth, et cetera. I think Melanie gave Geraldine a copy of the final, whatever changes need to be. Geraldine cleaned it up, sent that back. I'm, I'm hoping and I will check on, I don't know if you've checked on whether that's in the process of being signed by the town?
It is not signed yet. We're waiting for, there's a particular certificate of insurance that we need, which is the last thing they're waiting for. And they're hoping to have it signed within the next day or two.
Okay. And then I, I'm asking this because of this particular, there, these tasks actually have fallen to me over the past couple of years. Where once a contract is completed and signed by the vendor, the contractor, the whatever, I end up taking it to the first selectman to be signed. I scan it, put it on a shared drive and then I file a original with the town clerk. If the company wants an original sent to them, I send it. Otherwise the, I send them the scanned copy. Do you know if that was done with the STV contract? Jen?
I would have to ask Melanie.
I asked her and I haven't heard back yet. So follow me from her. I, because that, those steps are important to have. Actually, Mark Dupre sent me a scanned copy of the STV contract. I didn't need it. I just wanted to make sure an original got filed with the town clerk. Cause that's part of the town process. So I will check in with Melanie on that. And I'm hoping that the commission, that we get Save More done quickly and that the commissioning contract can be executed quickly also. Okay. Is there anything else that we need to, I have an invoice? What if there's anything else before that? Good? So I see. I'll put this up too, and hopefully you can see part of it. But I did send all of this around to everyone. So this is an invoice from STV. And since their contract was being wrangled a bit, we have not yet received an invoice from them for the high school or the HBAC project. So here it is. It's a little bit bigger than the other one. I will make a motion, this is for a couple of months. So I'll make a motion that we approve STV invoice number nine zero zero three two five nine three dated November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Services rendered from nine six twenty twenty-four through month eleven, twenty twenty-four in the amount of thirty thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Second.
Oh, second.
So I got a couple of seconds and that's for both Geraldine and Michael for a couple of months. Any questions on this? All in favor? Opposed? Done with that? All right. So is there anything else on the high school HBAC? Then I'll check in as Jen will on getting contracts signed, getting them in place. Anything, anything else on school projects? Good with those? Okay. Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Jen. We still have
Thanks, guys.
To do, but thank you.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays. See you in the new year.
You too. Bye, guys.
Bye, everyone.
Night.
Bye.
Municipal Center locker room renovation. Dan and I have a meeting scheduled next week with Peter Eckert from Architect's Guild. We were trying to put something in place and then Dan was away and then Peter was away. I was away and trying to, so next week. Does they, we've talked about how can they help us move forward? Can they continue or because of the insurance situation that came up with the town's needs for certain insurance coverage that they don't carry because of the type of firm that they are. Hopefully we can take some of the stuff that they've given us and put together for us and they can help us either find someone new or point us in the right direction. So I will go with Dan and Rachel, hopefully if she's available and meet with them and moving along with that. So that's the only update I have on that. And that's it. So does anybody have any other? It's nice playing with y'all.
Yeah.
Dr. Carver should have made cookies. So we should have made cookies for her. Maybe we'll have a party at the new year or something like that. And, and as I said, again, if, if you are not being reappointed, but you can join us, especially in January, while the Board of Selectmen works on getting appointments together, that would be helpful because Dave Horvath and Dave Resendez do not a quorum make. Even if I show up, that's only three. So as I said, I'll be in touch to let people know if I need to have people here. Hopefully you can join in for a month or so. And if you know of anybody who you think would be a good fit for this commission, either let me know. The process usually is, most of you know, that both town committees give lists of people to serve on boards and commissions to the Board of Selectmen. The town committees have already vetted these people. However, I know that Dan has taken it upon him what's needed for that particular board or commission and you know, make sure the person's going to work out. So if you know of anybody, you can let me know. I could have to have a lecture with Board of Selectmen. I, talking to someone and saying, hey, you'd be great to do this, be, be realistic with them about time commitment. So that there are two meetings a month scheduled. Generally our meetings last about this long. Unless we get into certain types of things where we're here till eleven o'clock at night, but that shouldn't happen anytime soon. And the biggest project that we're working on right now is the HBAC. And keeping that moving along with schedule, ordering, equipment, et cetera, I think is going to be really important. And that's kind of more up to STV, Michael and STV. But with us, if there are approvals that need to be made, if there are change orders, which we hope there aren't, and things like that, then we need to meet to be able to keep those things moving along. Are we good? One last time?
Make a motion. And thank you, everyone.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy.
Second. All in favor? Thank you, everyone.
Have a good holiday.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays to everyone.
All like that. All right.
I think I have somebody.